And on behalf of the City of Independence, I call this December 12th meeting to order. Staff, will you give a roll, please?
Commissioner Ashbaugh. Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Present.
Oh, he's gonna be that guy.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. And with that, I first want to welcome our new old commissioners, which sounds really wrong, I know. Dan O'Neal and Eric Ashbaugh. And not old as in age, but I was gonna say has been, and that's not any better. So, former. Perfect. Thank you, Heather. So, welcome back and welcome to the commission. I know we are all breathing much better because it's been a little scary not having the ability for any of us to be gone. So, thank you. Thank you for saying yes. With that, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. For those of you who wish to speak tonight, will you stand and be sworn in? And even if you only think you want to speak. Will you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly promise to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Has everybody had time to look at the minutes?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion for the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you. And we're ready for roll.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Took a break. She'll be back.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Next on our...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to continue case number 23-400-19.
My second. And we're ready for roll call.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. A case to be continued is case number 23-400-19. Short-term rental will be continued until the January 9th, 2024 meeting. Okay, our first case is case number 23-600-04, a special sign permit. Staff, will you give a report, please?
Okay, as you can see here on the vicinity map for this case, it's for a pylon sign at the Hub Shopping Center. As you can see, just west of the intersection of Hub Drive and East 23rd Street there on the south side, west of the Burger King, the applicant, Joe Tindall. And this pylon requires a special sign permit. So, here is the zoning for the shopping center. You'll notice it's C2, similar to most of the 291, 23rd Street commercial corridors. You've got some residential, single-family development to the west. And you have a church property there along 291 that's in the commercial area, but is zoned R6, single-family as well. Comprehensive plan envisions this area as commercial as it is. So, this is a overall image of the proposed changes that will come to this property. You can see the potential for new outlots along the north. The removal of an auto repair shop on the north side of Price Chopper. You can see Burger King turned to the side there. And additional outlots there next to the auto repair place there on the west side, down by where the License Row used to be. This pylon sign location, you can... They've actually depicted what that would look like. You can see there on the right, the pylon up by that north entrance. Which would be sign A. The sign Bs would be the outlawed monument signs, which of course would not require coming before you or completely administrative in their review. And this shows that location of the proposed pylon sign, which is the location of the existing pole sign, which you can see in the existing photograph here. Just at the south end of that arrow, and which of course gives you the distance there to the sidewalk. Or where a sidewalk would be. Actually, the sidewalk is in front of Burger King, but approximately the south edge of that right-of-way. So, this is the existing sign. And so, 10 feet wide, 26 feet tall. Then the proposed sign would be just as tall, but it would be much more of a statement, you know, a big, a lot wider and more visible and noticeable to traffic going down 23rd Street. Showing both the name of the center up top and all the tenant spaces. That could be depicted there. At least six, anyway. Project description: In association with the development of the Hub Shopping Center, the applicant seeks to install a new pylon sign in the same location as the existing Shopping Center pole sign, reusing the existing foundation and steel support column. The existing multi-pent tenant pylon sign located at the Hub Shopping Center is 26 feet tall and lies 20 feet south of the right-of-way line. Where pole signs are allowed, of course, this can only be 20 feet, 5 feet in height here in the city. Of course, this location actually requires monument signs, so the request is both to have a... Something other than a short monument sign, as well as being that tall. The applicant states that the sign is outdated and is not supportive of the development's proposed aesthetic. The applicant would like the new pylon sign to be in place by February of next year. The Hub Shopping Center is located generally west of M291 and south of 23rd Street. The current square footage of the shopping center is 165,000 square feet and sits on 16 acres. So, it includes a number of tenant spaces for retail, restaurant, and professional services. So, the shopping center is going and undergoing a major site improvement that includes some reconfiguration of the existing structures and addition of new outbuildings. And they're doing significant facade work and work to the parking lot, providing additional landscaping and islands and whatnot, and new lighting. The existing pylon sign, like stated earlier, is 26 feet tall. The sign face is... This new sign will be just as tall, but will consist of a pre-finished fiber cement board pylon framed on one side by a 21-foot-tall manufactured stone veneer column. And then up along the top, you'll have the sign face for the shopping center itself. And then you'll have the six additional 20-square-foot sign faces for indicated tenant spaces. The permit for the pylon should show, of course, a landscaping plan with a planning area that extends out three feet each direction from the sign base, which is typically now required for our freestanding signs. Analysis: As far as its consistency with the Independence for All Strategic Plan, the redevelopment project is visioned to have a positive impact on this visible intersection along the M291 corridor. And this sign is specifically goes along with the emphasis to grow retail and commercial business in the city. The comprehensive plan guiding land use principle that would be most relevant for this proposal is to help adapt the retail sector to new marketplace trends. So, I'm standing basically northeast of where the sign is. You can see the existing Burger King, and then you can see where the pole sign is, where that pylon would be. And here it is from the clear direction looking toward Advanced Auto Parts. And this is looking due south at the same location. And then from the northwest. And this is a little farther to the northwest. And this is looking directly east at it. And this is, of course, looking directly east at the existing pole sign. This is the Sonic Pole Sign that is northeast of the property. Our recommendation: Staff recommends approval of this special sign permit application for a 26-foot-tall pylon sign at the existing Shopping Center Pole Sign location with dimensions and made with materials as provided in the submitted site plan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Brian, what's our specifics right now on signs being put in? That don't have to have special sign permits? What's the specifics?
I mean, the reason why it has a special sign permit is it's... We're doing this... This is a procedure we've implemented to do in lieu of taking it before the Board of Adjustment and getting variances. And so, this is something that in the past we would have taken before the Board of Adjustment.
No, what I mean...
Is that what you mean?
Okay, somebody wants to put up a new sign. What's the specifics?
You mean like how?
How high, how wide, how deep?
Okay.
I know, because you said monument sign.
In this particular area, it's nine feet.
It's nine feet?
Okay, monument sign for... Because this is east of Lee Sumner Road.
Okay, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. And width doesn't matter, or it's just height is eight feet and be as wide as it wants to be?
No, it's... It can be 120 square feet of sign face.
Sign face. Both sides or one side?
Well, that's one side, so you double that, yeah.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I do. Brian, on the diagram that's all nicely colored, and it's just a rendering, I know that, but to me, it looks like there's two of these signs. Do we know if there's any plans to add more signs around the shopping center that would look just like this? And would they return to us if they wanted more than one sign?
You need to take that image, first of all, with a little grain of salt. It's sort of just an artistic image. But basically, what would be allowed is what I had on that white on here. So, we're talking about one sign that would be a shopping center sign. And then each lot is allowed to have a sign. And so, these outlots obviously would not be advertising on sign A. That would be for the main strip of tenant spaces. So, these outlots wouldn't have their businesses on that side, but on their own signs.
So, technically, with the outlots included, how many signs could there be? Three?
Two, three, four.
Four?
Well, these are different lots.
Okay.
These are splatted in a separate lot, so they're... Because... So, they're following the code requirement of one per right-of-way.
Okay.
You know, so...
So, you're saying that it looks like to me they can put another four... Three more signs on 23rd Street and three signs down the road there on... What is that?
Hub Drive?
Hub Drive.
I mean theoretically, they could put another... The shopping center could put another freestanding sign on its... On the east side there. And Burger King could theoretically do a second sign B.
So, where I see Bs on there, it looks like to me they could put signs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so now, when they come in, they're gonna want to put signs in, I'm sure, because they want to advertise there. So, we're talking about four signs there in that area, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But of course, they would be under... Those others would all be under eight feet, obviously.
That was my question. So, the other ones would be under eight? Okay.
Not unless they come and try to get a special sign permit.
Good point. Okay. Any other questions? Yes.
So, we're actually approving the one large sign that's A, correct?
That's correct.
And they have to come back and get special permits for the other ones if they want to do those?
No. They just need to go through our normal administrative signing process.
Because they are not special.
Right, because they will be completely within code.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a question. I'm sure this is the case, but I'd just really like to hear it. I'm assuming the landscape plan is gonna be redone in that area. Because right now, there's several large trees, and I'm sure they want to take the trees down to... So, you can see the sign. So, is that the... Is that the plan? Is to take those down and to replace those trees somewhere else more appropriate so they can see the trees and the sign?
I don't have the landscape plan in front of me for the entire development, so I'm trying to remember from my mind's eye. I mean, they have a landscaping plan that's gonna have to be approved for their final site plan. And then every sign has its own landscaping plan.
Sure.
As part of the permit. And when we review the individual permit, we'll look at things like visibility and, you know, placement of... Of course, the landscaping plan for the actual signs themselves, you're talking about shrubbery. You're not talking about trees. But if it conflicts with the existing plan, I mean, we can have them move trees to... Off to the side, to other locations, or whatever, if it creates a visibility issue. But they have to meet the planning requirements that's approved in the number of plannings and the species.
So, basically, the landscape plan is in the works. It hasn't been approved yet.
The landscape plan for the general development has.
Okay. I guess my question was, there's a couple of big trees right by that sign. And I'd just be real surprised if they want to leave them there.
Well, I'll have to take a look at that.
If they take them down, are they gonna be replaced?
Yeah, and they may have to swap locations, replan another tree for that tree to make it work. It's, you know...
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this is closed. And I'm open to comments or additional questions.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so we put this rule in effect to put monument signs in because... Wait a minute, what do you want to say, Brian?
I think the applicant needs to...
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
No, because it was a UDO.
He didn't want to come up? Oh.
So, I have to... I have to open the...
Public hearing.
Case, public hearing. Reopen. I'm reopening the public case. Come on up. And state your name and your address, please.
My name is Joe Tindall, and I'm actually with Grand Mark Signs. I live in Lawrence, Kansas. What I wanted to say is, and I think Brian did a really good job as far as taking you through the plan for the sign is, please keep in mind that there is an existing pylon sign there, already there. And I can assure you that the pylon sign that we want to replace it with is significantly nicer. It's very contemporary, and also frankly, it's very somewhat costly also because it includes stone and special materials. We have fabricated many, many, many signs, and I will tell you that we have never done a pylon sign that's as nice as this one, assuming this goes through. So, you know, we take obviously the quality very seriously. And I know there were some questions about landscaping. And I've actually been to the site a few times. Yes, there are trees there, but I don't know that those trees have to be affected by the new sign because, at least from my perspective, when I looked at the sign, it's fairly viewable right now. And like I said, we're just gonna replace it with the same size. So, I hope you'll consider, you know, the plan we have in place to significantly not only upgrade the center, but also decidedly upgrade the signage as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do I need to ask again if there's anybody here to speak for or against? Counselor?
Well, I'll go ahead and ask if there's somebody speaking against.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Okay. Now, I'm ready to close this public hearing. And entertain any comments. I just keep looking at this picture because I'm really excited about the investment that's happening on this corner. It is a busy corner. It's a visible corner. It's where so many people, visitors and locals alike pass through. And it's gonna improve that corner exponentially. And I can't imagine that they would cheapen out on a sign at this point, so I'm really excited.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so like he was talking next to me about the trees. I mean, like I say, this ordinance came into effect, I know, I think back in the 80s, about signs coming down to monument signs because of Nolan Road, but they were getting kind of ridiculous. I just feel like, though, if we got monument signs what should be there, I think should be. Because if you look, if you look at the trees, and I'm just sitting here looking at it right now, if he puts up a 29-foot sign, you're not gonna see the sign because of the trees. If then, I know that our regulations say they're gonna have to plant trees. Well, they're gonna plant small trees, and then they're gonna be in the way when they grow up. So, I'm just looking at the future. I still think we ought to keep it down at... I'm against this because I think if we got monument signs, that's what they're for, to keep these big signs out of the areas and things like that. That's why we went to monument signs. So, I think we're going against the regulations by letting us have a special permit, because who says? Somebody else comes in there, they're gonna want... Well, why can't we get a special permit, put up a big sign too? I know it's not right, so that's why I'm kind of against this sign going up.
But I guess to me, I mean, everybody would have to come either before us or...
Yeah, they still gotta come before us, but I think we need to stop trying to get special permits, guys, because everybody's gonna want to start putting up big signs, and that's why we have the ordinance to make them ma... Again, I don't think we should go against it. A nice monument sign would go a long ways there. Because like I say, you can keep the trees that are already there, and you'd probably be able to see the sign.
Well, it's 26 feet.
Yeah, but the trees get up to 25 feet or 30 feet tall. That's what I'm saying. The trees that are there, if you look back, I just looked on my phone, looked at Google Maps. When they're driving down the road, you can't see the sign that's there because of the trees.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I can't for the life of me think they would spend the amount of money that I'm sure this cost and then plant a tree that's gonna grow up in front of it.
Well, that's... But our regulation says they have to plant trees, correct, Brian?
No, it's just landscaping.
No, no trees.
Well, no. Well, the... For the... You talk about the sign...
No, for the whole area.
For the whole... Yeah, they have to do street trees, but they can be placed at different locations in order to work around visible visibility lines.
They all got cut down, just about. So, that happened too on Nolan Road. That's why I'm saying. I don't think that's correct. That's why I'm against having a big monument sign put up. I think the... I mean, a big sign. I think monument signs should be what we go with.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I got a question for you guys. So, if we say no, they could just leave that old sign there, right?
Yes, they could paint it. They could make it look better, but they couldn't take down the old cabinet.
So, in other words, the sign...
They'd have to work with the basic bones of what's already there.
What I'm saying is, right, the sign is there. I doubt that they're just gonna take it down just because we say no. We don't want it.
Yeah, so we'll probably still...
So, we might as well put a little makeup on it, you know? I mean, is that correct? There are no obligation to take the sign down if we...
Yeah, they could keep that existing pole sign, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I live about four blocks from this development, and I'm really excited about it happening. And I want to see... It's beautiful. I want it to... I don't want it to have an archaic piling sign there that doesn't go with the development. So, I would speak in favor of the new sign.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve case number 23-600-04, special sign permit.
Thank you. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-600-04 has been approved. Okay, thank you. Next case is case number 23-175-08, UDO Amendment Number 62. Staff, we're ready for a report.
Thank you. This is a update to our donation bin ordinance that we had modified and changed back in 2020, if you recall. We didn't really have a whole lot of information regarding donation bins, and we were seeing some issues regarding trash debris and people actually taking things out of donation bins. And so, that prompted council to ask staff to look at some ordinance changes. This is part... Mostly what this is, is including some enforcement and abatement clarity in the language of that code. Recent events have caused us to make sure we take a look at this again. And essentially, what it does do is it clarifies the... So, the city does work with a abatement contractor, and it makes sure that... and it makes sure that, uh, whether it's an abatement officer, that the contractor is also working in tandem with that officer. So this makes sure that we have the authority to, uh, abate any of these particular donation bins properties that, that we're having issues with. And then, of course, having the ability within the code to have the, um, abatement, um, the actual recovery of the abatement cost. So this actually, uh, makes it more consistent with the other portions of our code when it comes to the abatement and recovery of abatement cost. So it's also keeping it more consistent with what we currently have in other sections of our property maintenance code. We do also, in this, clarify some language regarding, uh, donation bins that are larger than the allowed height of like s- uh, seven feet, which is the allowed height. Uh, we had some language in there that basically called it an accessory structure. We're wanting to make sure that we clarify that as a non-residential building structure. And so just a little bit of cleanup and then referring to, um, a newer updated section of the code. And that is all I have for this update.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, Rick, I, just out of just a understanding of, of why this became so necessary, can you just tell me a little bit about what kind of things you've seen around the bins that this is?
Well, a lot of this had more to do with property maintenance, with, um, some of the commercial property maintenance and making sure that when we do have abatement authority, that it is clearly written in the code and then the ability to recover those abatement funds. Um, we don't have, fortunately, a lot of the, uh, businesses that do have donation bins have complied with the code. Uh, but we did have a couple of instances where we've had to go out and, um, make sure that these properties were maintained. And so that is what, um, prompted us to, to make this update.
Can you further clarify, so if, let's say it's a bin and people are dumping furniture? Okay, so how long do they have to maintain that property before we would have a cost to the city that needed...
Yes, so there's a long process that typically goes into place. I mean, there is a, one of our officers would typically notify the property owners. And depending upon the time, you know, it could be seven days or 10 days that they have to actually get that cleaned up. Uh, it's usually the cases where we don't get any responses and/or the contact information that we have for who's responsible for the bin, we don't get any responses from. Uh, because sometimes the bin, um, owners or the people responsible for the bins are not the same as the business or the property owner. And so that's primarily what these are for. But there, there is a, you know, notification process that our officers go through before we ever get to the point of abatement. Abatement, you know, usually it's the last thing we want to do. We don't want to have to expend city funds because there's, there really is no guarantees that we'll ever get it back either, so. Uh, so it's usually the last course of action that we take.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I remember right, in December of 2020, one of the modifications that was required was that every bin had to have specific phone number and address. Is that still part of this?
Yes, yeah, this is just, this is just adding the sections, but all that still remains.
But the other is still...
Yep, all that still remains in place.
Okay.
Yeah, when we do some of these code section updates, we only include the sections that we're modifying most of the time. Uh, because if we were to print out the entire section, you might have 20 pages. And so a lot of times we'll just include the sections that are just the update.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Is anyone here, would anyone here like to speak for this case? Would anybody here like to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any other questions or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case 23-175-08, UDO amendment number 62, donation bins.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-175-08, the UDO amendment number 62 on donation bins has been approved. Next case, number 23-175-09, UDO amendment number 63, short-term loans. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Yes. So this is a, um, kind of a product of some of the statute updates, um, for our short-term loan payday loan code section. Really, it's very simple. One of the things that we did not have included in the original code when that was written was what's called consumer installment loan providers. Uh, from what I understand, I'm not, you know, into the whole business of, of loans or banking, but it is a, very similar to a payday loan, it's just they have higher amounts that they loan for longer periods of time. It is a separate statute that is now in, in the Missouri, uh, code, and we just needed to make sure that we included that in this particular, uh, code section for the city. Um, we also added some clarity of, uh, language, the, and regulated portion, because I think that's also in the Missouri statutes. So we were basically making sure that our code section is updated with the current statutes and then making sure we have this, um, term for these consumer installment loan providers. And that is really all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I do. Um, I'm trying to think how, so you, you said consumer loan versus payday loan.
Yeah, so that, basically, they have separate statutes with how they operate. From what I understand, the consumer installment loan providers have different limits, different fees, and it's a little bit closer to like a typical bank loan, like a personal loan. Uh, but it is not a bank loan. There's actual consumer installment loan providers. That would not be your typical, like, you know, Bank of America or somebody like that. And so it does have a different statute, and it was brought to our attention. Um, we, we had one of our attorneys take a look at that and make sure that, you know, it is a separate thing that we need to make sure we have included, so.
So Madam Chair, a follow-up. Um, so currently we have a limit on payday loan. Is the consumer loan business under that same guise?
Not this, yeah, currently it, it would not be. Yeah, that is why we're adding it.
So I guess in theory, we could have kind of this, if it's considered predatory, I don't know if it is. Is this a whole nother lane for predators around this kind of money?
I, I wouldn't. I'm probably not going to, you know, say that it is or isn't, but, um, it is along the same lines of, you know, the title loans and the payday loans. Um, it's the same type of business, just termed differently because of the, the way the funds, I guess, are distributed. And like I said, there's, from what I understand, again, I'm not a, an expert in it, is that it just has higher limits for longer period loans.
Do we currently have these type of loan companies?
Um, we do at least have one, I know that.
Okay.
I don't have an exact number on all the others and how they operate, because like I said, they're a little different in how they, and usually it has to do with the fees and, and how they, how they fee the type of loan that they're giving.
So to clarify, this amendment makes the same code for a consumer loan?
Consumer installment loan.
Just like the...
Yes, the others, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, that was helpful. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. So we're not, the language says we're not including these people. Right?
Currently, the language does not have this provider included.
But to not include them.
Well, the...
With the first statement of the...
The, this, this amendment would include them.
Yeah. But it says, in the middle of it, it says, "But not including" this and this, or this, or this, or this, which sounds to me like you're separating them out not to be included. I'm a landscaper, I'm not an English teacher, so I'm just asking. If that was the intent.
I think the middle of that includes banks, savings and loans, associations or credit unions that are licensed and regulated, right?
Correct, 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 yep.
So that provision of being licensed is what separates them out.
Yep.
And it's purposely written that way, so it's huge present company, so that attorneys can do what they want.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we did have...
Not what they want to do, they need to do.
Yeah, we did have our legal representation look at this too, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you for including these, these need to be included. And I have, I understand that these have declined in independence from 14 to 8. Does that, does that sound right, Rick? That these type of establishments in the last 10 years have declined from 14 to 8? Does that sound right?
That sounds about right. I don't have the exact number, but...
Is, does, does 8 include these new, better branded installment companies?
I'd have to look and see if it does.
Okay.
If not, I would like to see consumer installment loan companies included in the language.
They are.
Yeah, I, what, I can provide, um, kind of a number of what we currently have, I just don't have that with me today, I apologize.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this is closed. Commissioners, any other questions of city staff, or I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case 23-175-09, UDO amendment number 63, short-term loans.
Is there a second?
I second.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-175-09, UDO amendment number 63, um, pertaining to short-term loans has been approved. Thank you. The exuberance on your votes was kind of fun. It was pretty funny. Okay. Next thing on our agenda that we've been putting off is election of officers. So...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I nominate Cindy McLean to maintain and remain and continue to be the chairman of this committee.
Is there anyone else? Throw their hat in. Okay. Can we, I don't even know, I don't know. I've only been through this one other time. So how, do we vote? A motion is second.
Yes, you can, um, make a motion to vote.
I think she made a motion, didn't she?
Oh, did you already?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Uh, I can't vote for myself.
Oh, you can't vote for yourself, alright, sorry.
Couldn't do it in high school, I can't do it now. Okay. Um, we need a... You're welcome. I enjoy it actually, which is really weird. Um, we need a, um, vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'll do it. I think I can nominate myself.
Is there any other nominations? We have Commissioner Nesbit. Right, you put your name in there. I wrote it down. Okay. Are we making a motion?
I'll make a motion that Butch Nesbit is our vice chair.
Is there a second?
I think that's called by acclamation. Election by acclamation.
I'll second.
All right. Second the acclamation. And, okay, we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yep.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Commissioner Nesbit is the vice chair. Until they kick you out. Oh, I don't even know. Yeah, we do vote every year, so.
Oh, okay.
That's true. But basically until they kick you out. Or we kick us out. Okay, anything for the roundtable for the greater good?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hey, Rick, have you guys heard any more on the Nolan Road? I want to say, big station going down there at the old ventures?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Wally's. No, but I'm going to ask for something.
So the only thing that we have currently is a pre-development meeting that is scheduled next week.
Okay, what I, I asked you guys this before, we need to get some kind of regulations on electric vehicle charging stations. Have we looked into that, are we looking into doing that? Because this place is probably going to have 20 or 30 of them.
So, I believe their proposal, at least what, what was in the media, was for like 20 electric charging stations at that?
But what I'm thinking, we need to get some kind of regulations on, I mean, we need to get up to standards on it, so...
You're, you're correct, yeah, we have been looking at, because a lot of this came into play when it came to some of the multifamily housing and, and how we can, um, is that something we can write into a code, for example, for requiring some type of charging stations, whether it be for those types of developments or maybe even other developments? Uh, we have not gotten anything finalized for that. Uh, but yeah, that is something that we've actually been looking at.
Okay, I just want to know if we have to have that regulations or something put in. I mean, we'd like to get sooner and later if that's something that's got to be done, so. Since we're behind the times, we need to get caught up. That's it, thank you.
I also have, um, a request that I've talked to Rick a little bit about, but I think that even though we do have a housing study, I know you guys all probably get comments and questions as well about, you know, the multi-units that we've, you know, said approved, and how many more are we going to approve? What kind are we going to approve, all those wonderful questions? So what I would like to propose that we do is to, each of us take some time to ask questions of the, um, planning office that maybe we get asked, and ask it in an email that is to all of us, obviously. Um, before the next session, we, we have a heavy load next meeting, but maybe sometime in January, we could actually talk a little bit more about what they are seeing, what the city is, is wanting, what the city manager wants, what the mayor wants, what council's looking at in terms of the future and what housing looks like. Because it, there is a shift, and we can't deny that, but we don't want to be stupid either. So, um, I think it would be interesting to ask some of those questions, or even questions we've had or things that have come up that we want to know more.
know more about, or, um, you know, like I, I've had a discussion about, you know, like how many, I'm using the wrong words, but how many, how many, what percent of luxury you want to have, what percent of medium income you want to have, what percent of, of affordable housing does a city need to have? Like, I don't know. I don't know any of the answers to that, but those are questions.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we don't have the answers to that. I don't know if you guys can get questions like that answered or not.
So one of, one of the things that we talked about is, so we do have a housing study. The housing study was done in 2022. But we do know, you know, just as staff, just because we work with developers and builders all the time, and we hear, you know, a lot of different things. Um, we do know, obviously, there's some shifts, you know, in the way people are living, you know, whether the question or the debate about whether renting is cheaper than owning a home right now. And it may be based on the current interest rates and the price of housing. Um, on the other hand, you know, we have people that are still looking to try to find a starter home. And so, uh, we hear a lot of things from the development side. Um, we do have, in that housing study, a certain amount of information. Um, the, you know, we can give you an update as to where we're at with the current developments, kind of where we're at with the housing study, um, the current numbers that we've approved in terms of some of these, um, large apartment complexes. Uh, and I know, uh, our attorneys or legal counsel is prepared to kind of give you guys a brief overview of some of the questions that we've heard about things like Section 8, as we approve, you know, these apartment complexes. And so, uh, what we talked about doing is kind of just doing a bit of a, I'll call it a study session, but more of a, of a, a report on the status of where we're at right now, give you kind of some information that we have heard, you know, from developers and where they're at with some of their developments. I mean, we have, I was mentioning this to Chairman McLean earlier, that we have, I want to say like six, maybe it was only four, but, uh, close to six single-family housing developments, but those developers are not, some of them are gonna start doing some developments, but a lot of them are just kind of waiting just because of construction loan cost and not wanting to sit on inventory that's, you know, kind of high right now for any length of time. So we can kind of give you an update on where we're at, um, where we, where we see us going. Uh, but also, keep in mind, internally, we're having discussions with wanting to update that housing study because we know housing trends, even though it's only been a year, year and a half since that study, are kind of changing. And, um, you know, see where we go in the future with that. But one of the things we wanted to hear from this group is, did you have specific questions that we can kind of include in that presentation, um, to answer some of the questions you may have?
I think that would be really helpful. I just feel like, you know, we, part of our role is to vet questions and allow the community to ask those questions so that then council has much better, um, viewpoint of things. And so I, and I'm sure you, I'm speaking for all of us, but we don't want to be a cog in the wheel. We want to help. And the more we know, the better we are, so...
Rick, who should those questions go to?
So you can, I would say probably, do you all have Miranda's email address? I would just send them to Miranda, and then we can compile those. Uh, looking at schedule, Chairman McLean was right, our next meeting is gonna have like eight cases, I believe, on it. So we're probably not gonna be doing that one. So this is either gonna be second meeting in February, or, or January, but maybe February, just...
Eight cases and five of them are short-term rentals? I don't think...
I don't think any of those are short-term rentals, if I'm not mistaken, so...
Oh, except for one.
Okay, we had one. Okay, he said we had one. All right.
Okay. Anything else?
January 9th? Is that right?
Yeah.
Next meeting is January 9th. Okay. Have a happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:55. I was off by 10 minutes.